Thank you all for coming. I want to make a couple introductions. With us tonight is Councilmember Mike Cordero and Planning Commissioner, Chairman Tim Seifert. And so I guess, we don't have a quorum, so that's okay. We weren't going to take any action anyway. We're going to go ahead and hold the meeting. The introductions for our county persons will have to wait until they get here. My name's Philip Sinco. I'm Assistant City Attorney. And I'm going to start this meeting, well, let me give you a little explanation of what we have in mind here. The goal of these forums is to provide education to our policymakers and the public about the very complex world of the H2A program. We're going to take it in chunks, so that we don't, because otherwise, we'd be here for a weekend seminar, eight hours a day. It's that complicated, and the issues are that interrelated and difficult. So tonight, the plan was to have the County of Santa Barbara explain its policies, its limitations, why it can't, what it can do and what it can't do with respect to providing housing for H2A workers. That's an issue that's really important for our city council's consideration of this issue. So, it was also thought, though, it might be helpful to have an overview of the H2A program at the beginning of each of these meetings. Even though we're going to have a focused session, it'd be good to have an overview to kind of give a, just a basic understanding for the topic that's new to people. We're going to have different people coming, I assume. And each time, we'll have a, we'll have a common base of information to build on. So I'm going to ask that the lights be turned off. And we were all supposed to, also supposed to have two microphones, one for the county people and one for me, but we only have one. At any time, if you think of a question, because we want to be efficient with our time, and we have note cards in the back, please fill out a note card with your questions, and we'll take them at appropriate time. But, let's get started with this. "The program allows agricultural employers who anticipate a shortage of domestic workers to bring non-immigrant foreign workers to the U.S. to perform agricultural labor or services of a temporary or seasonal nature." It's seasonal when it's just, labor is needed during, for a short time above what is normal ongoing operations. It's temporary when it usually needs to last no more than a year. Oh, I think our people have arrived. The use of the H2A worker program is on the rise nationally. You can see from, basically from 2008, it went down a little bit, but it's doubled in the last 10 years. Locally, that's no, no difference either. The use of the H2A Temporary Worker Program in California has, has increased in California, as you can see, quite, quite a bit as well. This is the fundamental basics of the H2A program. You have to recruit U.S. workers first. If you don't have sufficient U.S. workers, you can apply and get foreign workers, but you have to provide housing at no charge to the worker. And you have to provide meals, actually, you can charge portion for the meals, or provide an equipped kitchen and permit employees to buy and cook their own food. You have to provide transportation to the workers. And you have to pay what, what we call the H2A minimum wage, which is actually higher than the California minimum wage. You can see, it's a little more than $2 more per hour. The process is complicated, but consists mostly of four parts. A U.S. employer applies for labor certification from the Department of Labor. If granted, the employer submits petition to the Department of Homeland Security, which conducts background checks on the proposing the workers. Step three is the foreign worker has to apply for a visa from the Department of State, and then they have to seek admission. So these are legal persons. They come in on a visa. I'm going to break this down a little more and go into detail. Whoops, what happened? Okay, no more than 75 calendar days, and no fewer than 60 calendar days before the start of the job. The employer must submit a job offer on the Form 790. That starts the process. And it's submitted to the state workforce agency serving the area. Here in California, that's the Employment Development Department. And then no later than 45 days before the job start date, the employer must file an application for temporary employment certification. That's Form 9142A. You have to file that with the Department of Labor stating that there are not sufficient able, willing, and qualified U.S. workers available to perform the temporary and seasonal agricultural work, and employment of the workers will not adversely affect the wages and working conditions of similarly employed U.S. workers. Department of Labor reviews the application and normally will notify the employer within seven days. That's pretty quick, especially for government. And whether the application is accepted or rejected. And if it's accepted, the notification will say that a certification determination will be made no later than 30 calendar days before the date in which the workers are needed. Of course, if it's an emergency application and there's not that time, obviously, that time period can change, but if you follow the normal times, they'll, they'll let you know 30 days before the date the workers are needed. Whoops. Okay, after the application is accepted, the EDD here in California is directed to circulate a copy of the job offer, and then the employer must engage in positive recruitment of U.S. workers, and it has to submit a report of what it's done. That's quite a bit of stuff they have to do. They have to contact by mail or other effective means any former U.S. workers from the previous year and solicit their return to the job. And they are often directed to do additional recruiting with specific instructions contained in the notice of acceptance, which can include placing ads in newspapers or other advertisements in no more than three other states within the regional area or expected labor supply states. Main thing is a advertisement in a Sunday newspaper of general circulation in the area of intended employment, two separate days. The advertisement has to contain a lot of specific information. We won't spend a lot of time on it, and we won't go over everything, but it has to include the wage officer, offer, what's the H2A minimum wage, has to advise that there's a three-force guarantee, which means that if the employer, if the worker's accepted and the job begins, they will be guaranteed three quarters of the hours that they're promised. Even if they don't, even if there's not work, if they get there and the rain wipes out the crops, they still have to pay the 75 percent whether they work or not. They're told that they don't, they're not required to bring their own tools, supplies, or equipment that's to be provided to the worker at no cost. Housing will be made available, transportation will be made available. You have to continuously positively recruit along those lines until workers have departed for the place of work or three days before the start of the job, whatever's earliest. And the job order, although the recruitment doesn't go on, the job order is, remains open. And until 50 percent of the work period, the U.S. worker suddenly shows up and asks for a job, they have to be given serious consideration. And I imagine they would have to be hired unless there's a real good reason not to. Okay, after the certification, they have to file a Form 129 with the Department of Homeland Security where the background check is done. So, we're not looking at bringing in people that are questionable. These are people without criminal backgrounds. The check is pretty thorough. And then after they've gotten their, they've cleared their background check, they apply for the visa, and then they have to report. So, okay, that's basically an overview of the H2A program. Now, there's a lot of regulations involving the housing, the care, feeding of the workers and all that. Focusing on the housing for now, there's another, something important to understand in California about H2A workers and the housing issue. Something called the California Employee Housing Act. California law, because it has an Employer Housing Act, requires H2A housing to comply with the, excuse me, Employee Housing Act, requires H2A housing to comply with those provisions. And that's in addition to H2A federal requirements, and usually whatever stricter will apply. California Department of Housing and Community Development is responsible for conducting inspections and issuing permits for, on an annual basis, I think I got a typo in there, for employee housing unless a local jurisdiction has requested and obtained that authority. Only a few counties have done that. I don't think there's any cities in California that have taken on that responsibility. Now, a land use permit or zoning clearance is required in order, if it's required, it's required by the Housing and Community Development before they'll issue a permit. However, the Employee Housing Act provides certain exceptions, and one that's very important for, as far as the City of Santa Maria is concerned, is that the use of a single-family home serving six or fewer employees is considered a residential property use and must be treated the same as any other residential use. So, nothing the city can do can change that fact. And again, that's the sections that say that no conditional use permit is required. Okay, with respect to the housing requirements, 50 square feet of space per bedroom, or for bedrooms that are, excuse me, for spaces, rooms that are used for sleeping, employee has to have at least 50 square feet. There's other requirements. There's bunk, bunk bed spaces, clearance of the ceiling, and things like that, but that's the key, is 50 square feet. The kitchen, if it's provided, has to be fully equipped with pots, pans, common area, dining area. Or three meals per day could be provided, and there's no requirement that a kitchen be provided. I think there's a requirement for a dining hall or a mess hall. Have to have somewhere to eat, even if the food's being catered, but there's no requirement of a kitchen. That's why H2A workers can stay in hotels, because the food is catered. If you're going to provide a kitchen, ovens are not required. I thought, that was surprising to me. I thought an oven would be required, but only stove top or burner units are required. Refrigerator must be required, of course. It wouldn't make much sense to have people buy their own food only to have it go bad because it's not refrigerated. Bathroom and laundry facility with laundry tub, at least, they have to be provided, and at least one showerhead per 10 housed workers. And fire extinguishers and ladders. Okay, now, according to our best estimates, out of the approximately, this was from last year, last fiscal year, there was 2,691 H2A workers residing in the county, and the City of Santa Maria housed about 1,700 of those, definitely more than, one more over half. About 900 of those were housed in residential dwellings. Now, I don't have a breakdown as to how many were housed in R1, R2, or R3, but in about 800 were housed in hotels and motels. And that concludes my overview. I saw some people writing questions. Kai, can you bring those up? See if there's any questions about, that can be answered now. I thought I saw our county people. Oh, come on up, please. Thank you. Okay, now, this gentleman is Dan Clement. He's the Deputy Director of Long Range Planning for the county, and, sorry, your name?
Jesse Steele.
Jesse Steele is a planner. Perfect timing. We were supposed to have two microphones.
Oh, okay.
I apologize. We're going to have to trade this one back and forth.
Do you have my mic?
I do. I'm ready to load it. I'm going to look and see if there's a few questions I can answer, and then we'll let you, and as soon as I answer a few of these questions, we'll, we'll start with the county's presentation. They have, they have a PowerPoint, and they also have some other information, and I'm sure you'll have a lot of questions about this. So, thank you for your patience while we deal with this one microphone here. I brought my glasses in for a reason. What do you want to do with them? Okay, here's a question. It's more of a policy question. "Agriculture is an integral part of Santa Maria's economy and identity. Two-thirds of our workforce work in ag. Why should agro-housing not be in Santa Maria?" I don't think anyone's arguing that it shouldn't be here. I believe that the consensus is that it may not be, H2A may not be in appropriate use in the R1 and the R2. Even when the city council took some action on temporary urgency ordinance, it permitted, without restriction, H2A housing in the R3, and then the commercial zones. So, no one's saying it shouldn't be, it's just that, the question is whether it's in appropriate use in R1 neighborhoods. Okay, one of the questions would be the county be answered. Why doesn't the farmers, why don't the farmworkers work, live on the farm? Very good question. Yes, one of the questions here is, are there other places that farmworkers could live within the city that don't displace existing residents? The answers, on the question, like maybe hotels? And the answer is yes. One of our plans is to work with the hotels and see if we can't come up with a better arrangement or some encouragement, some incentives, to have them actually house more workers than they're currently doing. That's part of our plan. We haven't quite set in a motion yet. Like I said, there's a lot of moving parts to this puzzle. Okay, a couple of these questions are dealing with the county. I'd like to go ahead and start that. I'll go through these and ask, and answer a few more of them. But, let's go ahead and start the county's presentation. Dan, do you want to start?
Sure.
Okay, we have a remote control button here. So, I'll get your PowerPoint going, and you can introduce yourself again, and I'll get the PowerPoint ready for you.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having me. My name's Dan Clement. I am the Deputy Director of the Long Range Planning Division of the Santa Barbara County Planning and Development Department. And with me is Ms. Jesse Steele, planner with Long Range Planning. Works on a lot of housing-related issues, so. So what we're going to be presenting tonight is the county's perspective on housing. God, thank you. Tonight, we're going to be presenting the county's housing programs, mainly because, as I'll discuss a little bit later, we really don't have H2A-specific programs that we implement at the county. And what we are slayed with doing, that is, for us in the Long Range Planning Division, is developing a lot of the housing programs and also the regulations that apply to agricultural designated lands, as well as a number of the other lands in the county as well. So, with that said, I think you got a very good detailed description of the program from Mr. Sinco as part of his presentation. What I think I do is kind of take it back to the 30,000-foot level and try to wrap our minds around the issues involving the H2A program. And really, this is a housing scarcity problem. It's not something unique to the H2A program. We who have to regulate, for example, the South County, we experience other problems due to housing scarcity, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. And it's also a challenge for the economics of agriculture. And it's my understanding that as part of a follow-up workshop, that is, one that is going to occur, very similar to this one, Mr. Sinco is actually going to invite some of the agriculturalists in to offer their perspective. So I'm not going to go into too much detail about that. You want to hear that, hear about that from the experts. But, I'm going to focus more on the housing issue and a few key points. And the first one is that this is really a regional problem. It's not any single jurisdiction's problem. No single jurisdiction can solve the housing crisis that Santa Barbara County, Ventura County, and to a lesser degree, San Luis Obispo County is facing. And you see the problems and challenges from the scarcity of housing in programs like the H2A. For us, we see it with regard to things like vacation rentals, and people believe that that's taking away housing stock that would otherwise be used to house folks. And a couple of other examples I'll get to in just a minute. And then, just very generally, once again, I'm not an expert on agriculture. I see that there are some experts here in the room, and once again, they'll be able to provide you with more detail about this. But just in general, there are increasing challenges with farming right now. There's very good competition from other countries, particularly in South America, that are making it challenging to compete in the markets. You have increased regulatory costs. And we here, citizens, we are unwilling to do farm labor work. So the farmers have to go elsewhere, and they've got to look for who will be willing to take on this work. And the solution historically has been immigrant farm labor. So, it's a fact, it's a reality, and they're just trying to make ends meet. And then finally, their market demands. So for example, how we perceive the food products that we purchase in the market, where they've come from, whether or not they're safe, contaminated, those sorts of issues. Those are all very real considerations for the agriculturalists, and those put very real constraints on how they conduct business. Excuse me. So, there is, so I'm getting used to this controller. So when it comes to housing in the unincorporated areas, a lot of people come to us and say, "County, why aren't you doing more? We want more farmworker housing. Why can't we see the density of housing that is required to really put a dent in this housing scarcity problem, at least with regard to farmworker housing?" And one message I want to get across tonight is that there are very real strict limitations that reside in state law, which limit our ability to authorize the type of housing that we really need to address this issue. And some of those laws reside in state, the state government code. So for example, there's an agency called the Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, and they implement a number of state laws which at least discourage, and in some cases, flat-out prohibit, urban sprawl. And by that, I mean urban types of development extending beyond the city boundaries into the unincorporated areas, because there are goals in state law to preserve agricultural lands and open, and open space lands. And nowadays, in contemporary state planning law, the real goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled, reduce your greenhouse gas emissions, and the manner in which we are being instructed to do that is locate new housing within those areas that already have the services that are required to support the housing. These are areas which already have sewer service, water service, mass transit. Those areas are where? In the cities, the urban areas. So we are being instructed to locate the housing to address the housing needs in those areas. And as an unincorporated county, we just don't have those areas. And we do not qualify, for example, for exemptions to fast-track certain housing projects because we're not cities, we don't have the density, we don't have the services to provide that. So, it's frustrating for us because we really want to provide housing. And I think I could speak for Jessica, I definitely speak for the board. They're doing everything we can to implement housing programs that we can do, and it gets frustrating at times because we can't rely upon, on some, some of these provisions in state law in order to provide housing. So, eh, excuse me. Yeah, so once again, there are a lot of forces saying that housing should occur in the urban areas and prevent us from allowing housing out in the farms. So, but despite all that, once again, we're trying to do all we can. And that, we have some existing provisions, and then we're also working on some new ones. So the existing provisions are, in our county code, we have a farmworker housing ordinance, which was adopted pursuant to state farmworker housing law. That is in effect. Farmers could utilize that to propose new housing on their lands. However, there are limitations. You've got to comply with state law, and state law, for example, says, as a part of this program, if you're going to house a farmer, you must also house their family as well. Well, that's problematic because you're taking up some of the housing for their, their family. So that limits how many employees can utilize farmworker housing. So there are limitations on that program. We also have an existing program for another type of farmworker housing, which we call agricultural employee dwellings, or AEDs. And there's also, as probably, all of you are well aware, being in the city, hearing about this at the state, although this is not directly related to farmworker housing, there's also recently adopted state laws which say that wherever we allow a single-family dwelling, we must also allow a accessory dwelling unit, or ADU. So although that's not directly related to farming, that is also another type of housing option that is available to folks, for folks to use. In addition, we also have been directed by our Board of Supervisors to modify some of our existing regulations to streamline the permitting process for farmworker housing. And that has come into play with regard to our agricultural employee dwellings ordinance. Ms. Steele here is working on revising our ordinances to reduce the permitting requirements to make it more streamlined process for farmers to get agricultural employee dwellings allowed on their property. But what I would say with regard to just the agricultural employee dwellings, and then once again, to farmworker housing in general and unincorporated lands, what we're finding with these projects is the permit to allow the housing is not so much a constraint. What really constrains the farmers when it's going to come to this sort of housing are the utilities that must be installed in order to serve these types of units. And there are very real constraints on, for example, the septic systems and water systems that are required to support the housing, which will constrain how many units a farmer can realistically get on his or her property. So, once again, we're doing as much as we can, but there are some constraints that limit what we can provide and allow. And finally, I will say, we have an adopted housing element, and as a part of that element, there are a number of programs in it which instructs us to go ahead and pursue, for example, housing density opportunities. Once again, we have to focus on the few urban areas where that could realistically occur, given the utility and infrastructure needs of these projects. But where we can, we are citing those, locating those areas, we're zoning them properly and enabling the property owners to go ahead and develop at a higher density than what would typically be allowed, especially if they're going to include affordable housing for low and very low-income categories. So, just some stuff we're working on, and then just some statistics here with regard to the types of farmworker housing that we have in fact permitted. We just ran a quick report for the timeframe from January 2001 to December of last year. We've issued 47 building permits for various types of farmworker housing and agricultural employee dwellings. And I should clarify, these are not single-family dwellings. This is not the primary residence on the property. These would be the accessory dwelling units that would be allowed in addition to the primary single-family dwelling. Or if somebody's going to pursue an accessory dwelling unit, that's, they could do so in addition to the other types of farmworker housing. And it's interesting, because we have only processed one, we've only received one application for an H2A-specific farmworker housing project for the unincorporated areas, and you can see some of the stats on the screen here. That accounted for 30 bunk houses, up to 600 workers, and involved development of about 7.92 acres. And I'll say, that's, this has been approved. They are now going through the process of getting all, you know, all the subsequent approvals and actually, all their ducks in a row to actually develop. But the story here is that we're not seeing these applications. And the one we did see, we approved, and it was rather successful after that particular property owner was able to get over the hurdles with regard to the utilities to serve these units. So, the applications just start coming in to us. So, just in general, I want to sum this up, because I know there's a lot of questions that you might have for us. Once again, I just want, I can't emphasize this enough. This is a housing scarcity problem. We all have to chip in to solve it. It's not going to be one jurisdiction that can do it. And the more we fight back against the state, for example, when the state is trying to streamline housing provisions, the more our local jurisdiction will be taken away from us, and the more draconian the requirements are going to be from the state. So we all have to play ball if we want to stay in charge of our local regulations, and we're going to have to cooperate on this. And once again, being in the county, we're very limited with regard to what we can do with regard to mass housing. So we need you, the cities. We need your urban developed, development to create a density such that we can push that development in the cities where it's appropriate and keep the ag, relate, ag lands, ag, open space, areas, open space. With that said, I guess I'll turn it back to Mr. Sinco, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll have to share this mic. We were supposed to have two. First meeting glitch. So Dan, don't go too far. That's for the recording. They need that one. I have a question for you. This came in. Why must they house the family if the, the workers are here on visa? I think I can partially answer that. The H2A doesn't really allow families. It allows males or females, but not families, except maybe some rare circumstances. But the regulations that you're talking about under the Employee Housing Act require family housing, because it was written at a different time for a different purpose. Is that right? Now, this one's for me. Why can't they build units on empty lots within the city limits? And there's a couple identified across from the bus depot. Yeah, that would be a great spot. We've been wondering what's going to happen there. Where the old Santa Maria Where the old Santa Maria Hotel once stood, another excellent suggestion. East Main and Sway. Well, one thing is, people have to bring the applications. We can't magically make that happen. So, if people aren't willing to do it, it's not going to happen. Now, we have had some people contact us about possibly building some projects in the city that are appropriate for H2A housing. One thing we discovered, unfortunately, is that the density that developers are looking for to make H2A affordable and profitable for them to invest in, or make them pencil out, as they say in the development world, they need density higher than our general plan allows. And like, for instance, our high-density residential areas under our general plan, we permit 22 acres per unit. Large cities like the Bay Area have about 40 acres per unit, or, excuse me, 40 units, 22 units per acre. 40 units per acre is very common in large metropolitan areas. So, people say, "Okay, we'll change it." We're looking into that. We would love to change that, but we can't change that particular thing quickly because it's part of a general plan, and it has to be studied, and it has to be sequed down in environmental review, so it's a several-year process before we can take care of that. Okay, that question I'm going to come back to. Okay, this, sorry, because I can take this one, too. Got a couple of questions about, "How do H2A workers access resources or learn about their rights if they're isolated from the community?" Another one similar, "If someone is living in a rural area and is a victim of crime, how do they get to the police, go to church, buy groceries, and access legal aid?" I think that's kind of a question for the county. One of the problems, one of the negative sides of having housing in the county would be potential isolation. Would you care to address that?
Well, yes. Once again, because of our distance, well, the distances from the farms to where the services are provided for families for what you do after you get off work, those services are here in the city, so it's more appropriately located over, you know, in these areas. So, once again, you don't have to rely upon, for example, your automobile to drive long distance to get those goods and services. So, yeah, so, once again, all contemporary planning and the laws state that locate the housing in those urban areas where you have those services already available.
That is, there are pluses and minuses to having H2A housing in the city and in the county. Like, you just heard the potential isolation being in the county, and one of the persons raised the point that, I'm sorry, excuse me, that what's wrong with having H2A people, workers, live here because they contribute to the economy? They spend money in our stores and things like that, and that is a positive feature of having H2A workers residing within the city. There's a couple of questions that are kind of overlap. Homes in Tanglewood are listed as single-family dwellings, and how do, oh, this is kind of a general question about how do they reconcile multiple families owning or renting these homes and garages? These are common problems that we're having all through California, overcrowding, and certain assumptions were made when these houses were built, and times have changed. Housing's sky-high, people don't have as much money for their housing as they used to, and so they're putting more people in housing than has typically been seen, and that's not going to likely change, and something the state is well aware of, and that's one reason why there's a housing crisis. They want to create some more affordable housing. Occupancy is really something that the city and the county can't really regulate. It's kind of controlled by state law, and state law allows more occupancy than most people feel comfortable with. So, that's not really something we're going to be able to do much about. But with the people that ask questions about Tanglewood being used, that is in the county, and that's subject to county jurisdiction, so nothing the city can do will change that. And I don't think the county has any plans to do something related to H2A housing. Yeah, I don't think so. So, sorry, folks. Okay. I should actually, I'll let you look at these, and then I'll let you answer them while I go through the last of these. Oh, this is one that sort of was answered. I'll let Mr. Clement answer it again. "What is the public cost of extending public infrastructure support to those housing projects outside of city limits, whether it be water, sewer, public safety, police, patrol, emergency vehicles, et cetera?" Oh, not sure he was able to hear that. I'm sorry. Somebody asked a question, "But what is the public cost of extending public infrastructure support to housing in the county?"
Unfortunately, there's so many variables that go into that question. It's really hard to say, and it's actually probably a question that'd be better suited for a developer. I don't know if you're planning on having any developers speak at future workshops, but it's very variable. It depends on where the property is located in relation to where the existing facilities are, what the construction costs would be associated with, you know, running, for example, a sewer line out to the property. And once again, those regulations that I talked about earlier, which discourage or in some cases actually prohibit the extension of sewer lines, may make that impossible. So, it's hard to say. There are a lot of variables. I don't mean to sound like a litigious attorney and say it depends, but it actually does depend in this case, so.
Got another hot topic for you. "How are LAFCO policies that look to protect agriculture reconciled with the issue of urban sprawl? In other words, does LAFCO really restrict farmworker housing when their overriding policies are to protect agriculture?"
Yes, and this is a great example of the challenges with just planning, because planning involves, many times, conflicting values and goals, and what our decision-makers are tasked with doing is trying to balance all those and come up with the best solution. So, here, it's a trade-off. Protect the farmlands so you can continue farming versus convert those farmlands into housing and thereby take away the ability to farm those lands in the future. And the way LAFCO law is written is that it generally discourages, and once again, in some cases prohibits, urban sprawl going out into the farmlands, because really the goal is to conserve those agricultural lands and open lands for all of the benefits that they provide to us. And there are, for example, very strict regulations with regard to defining the furthest extent that cities can expand out into those agricultural lands. If you want to extend those boundaries into those agricultural lands to facilitate more urban development, you do have to go through a process with LAFCO to get this approved after you go through the city's entitlement process, just to get authorization for the project and get the city to buy off on pursuing this annexation and allowing your project to go through. So, it's a give and take. So, what LAFCO is charged with doing is, once again, trying to balance all those conflicting values, maximize and protect agricultural lands on the one hand, yet, on the other hand, try to locate and facilitate the development of housing in areas where it's appropriate to be able to help out the farmers so that they can continue farming. And it's challenging. There's trade-offs involved with that.
Do you want to go ahead and answer the question?
So, this question here is, "Are there plans to build long-term housing for local farmworker families?" And our county Department of Housing and Community Development actually does work with affordable housing developers on multiple projects for various types of families, including farmworker families. So, currently, they have Los Adobes de Maria III going in and being developed, and that's the third project that they have in a series of farmworker housing projects. And then, they also, they just recently gave us a list of some affordable housing projects that they've been working on, and they have one undesignated project that will be developed soon. They're going to have more details on that, but there is something in the works for the future in addition to Los Adobes de Maria III.
Take that, Card. I have one to give to you, and maybe go on a little more. I think we're all interested in the H2A facility approved in the county. Well, this question was, "What was the total time and cost associated with it?" I assume they mean cost to the developer, both through the county process, also maybe the value, the cost of to build it if you know, maybe you don't know that. And also, what was, I mean, are there any other locations, and this is my own question, are there any other locations in the county where a similar project could be built nearby Santa Maria that, like that one?
Okay, with regard to the first question regarding the time and expense, we don't have those numbers for you. We could get those and provide them to Mr. Sinco, and where our presentation is published, we could publish that information. We really don't know. That'd really be a good question for the property owner or developer of that project. With regard to other properties that may also be eligible for such a project, once again, it's a very site-specific consideration, and the real challenge is, can you get a septic system if you've got the water source to support that? And then also, what I didn't go into detail about is that there's also, a lot of the agricultural lands in the unincorporated area are subject to a program called the Agricultural Preserve Program, and that's a state property tax reduction program where if farmers agree to conduct a certain amount of farming on their property, in exchange for that, they'll get a property tax reduction. And the objective of the law is to incentivize farmers to continue farming. So, one other constraint for many of the farmers when it comes to these projects is they've got to maintain compliance with that contract such that they can continue to receive their property tax reduction, yet because of the constraints on development that is unrelated to ag, they're really constrained and confined with regard to how much employee housing they can provide. So, between the utility requirements, the Agricultural Preserve Program, you know, you're putting layer upon layer of restrictions and challenges to developing property. So, it's tough. You've got to find a property where you got the land, you can maintain compliance with your ag preserve contract if you're under contract, and can you get all of the approvals for the infrastructure to support the housing? You can do it, but it's challenging.
This is sort of a follow-up. I don't think it was intended to be. This person has legislative statement from the Employee Housing Act. It says, "The legislature hereby declares policy of the state to encourage development and use of sufficient numbers and types of employee housing facilities as our convention with local need." Question is, what is the county doing to reduce permitting process and the time involved for those facilities?
Yeah, very good question. I should say, I should actually back up. I should say, the county, over roughly, probably like the last 15, 20 years, has undergone a number of process improvement efforts to improve our processing of permit applications. So, we've already developed a lot of that, but as I mentioned earlier, what Ms. Steele here is working on, for example, is a change to our permitting requirements for agricultural employee dwellings, and we're proposing to downshift, that is, make a less rigorous permit required for the development of these types of dwellings. That's currently going through our approval process. It's been presented to our planning commissions. Looks like it's going to be sent on to our board here soon, and then ultimately, the board would have the option of, you know, approving or denying those ordinance amendments. Also, another thing, as I mentioned earlier on in the presentation, is that we also have an adopted housing element, has a number of programs in it directing us, as we get the resources to do so, to pursue, for example, housing density incentive programs. Once again, doesn't really help a whole lot with regard to farmworker housing on farmlands, but it is more housing which could be used by farmers. So, there's a handful of those projects that we have in the works right now, and every year, I'd say, in our work program, we have at least two housing programs which involve some type of permit reduction program or some rezoning of property, once again, to incentivize more dense housing on the few lands where we can do so.
Okay, I'd like to finish up the questions we got before the county's presentation. Not sure this one makes, I'm not sure I understand. It says, "How and when, where will a decision be made to change R1 zoning in order to accommodate housing for H2A workers?" Currently, there's no, there's nothing needed to accommodate H2A workers. That's already the law in California. The city may consider, as it did on a temporary basis, to consider some restrictions on H2A housing in residential R1 or R2 zones, but it hasn't, this is the purpose of this forum, is to gather information to inform that decision-making progress. There's a couple of questions about people saying that they don't really feel safe with these houses. I wanted to share something about that. One of the things that we've learned through this process over the years is a number of properties that were being used by people for normal legal purposes. One of them was a hotel in town, and others were just rental properties. They were purchased by farming operations that wanted to use them for employee housing. Prior to the purchase, for instance, the hotel was one of the biggest places in town where crime was being committed. It was 300 calls for service a month. That's 10 a day. And there was stabbings and beatings and prostitution and drug dealing, and it was really awful. We were taking action to, we started proceedings to establish a receivership to take control of the property because of the bad problems that were happening there. That caused the owner to shut it down and sell it to somebody who happened to be a farmer who turned it into an asset for the city. It's now H2A housing, and we have no calls for service. And that pattern's been repeated over and over in the city, where like a troublesome rental house with people, all kinds of complaints that we've had from the community, purchased by H2A workers, or, excuse me, by H2A employer, workers live there. Yes, there's some crowding, that's a concern to the neighbors, but our calls for service, our code enforcement cases disappear. We've seen that happen over and over again. So, that's positive, in fact, that we don't always take into account with H2A housing. That doesn't change the fact that there are some bad actors out there that will take advantage of the system, and those are houses that we would like to go after on a normal basis, just like we would for any other property that, where there's problems. We have code enforcement, we have police. This is a question. "How is it legal to displace physically and mentally disabled members of our city to make room for temporary workers and to evict citizens from their rental homes with no claim of eminent domain?" Well, the city's not doing it, so eminent domain doesn't apply. Private property rights, if somebody purchases a property and they no longer want to rent it to somebody or to a certain person, they can do that. That's just the American way. "Why can't they build units on empty lots within the city limits?" I already answered that question. We would love to. We are looking into that. I assure you all, that is one of the, aside from this process and aside from any ordinance that may or may not be adopted by the city council, we are definitely looking at how can we develop some of this housing? And not only are we going to look to develop this housing to solve the problem now, but what happens 10 years, 15 years, when that H2A isn't needed anymore? Maybe mechanization is created so that H2A isn't really necessary, or maybe there's different rules or a different program that changes things, and this housing isn't necessary anymore. What are we going to do with those buildings? Well, we want to design those buildings today with an application for the future, and that's a challenge, but our community development department is definitely up and ready for that challenge. We are exploring those options right now, but that's going to take some time. That's not going to solve the problem this year or even next. So, I think I already answered this last question, which is, "In what ways has H2A impacted, both negative and positive, to the community?" And I think we've kind of covered some of that. There's an argument to be said for having H2A workers here in the city in appropriate locations, near services, where they can purchase things to help support businesses. One of the questions was, "Why can't we use, like, places like the empty Costco to develop and create housing opportunities?" And actually, I see a member from our community development department who probably doesn't want to be called up to answer that question, but that's something she actually shared with me. She would like to see some of these commercial centers that are being challenged now. You know, we have the Eno's Ranch, and we have the new Costco, and some retail in the city is doing really, really well, and then other areas, you know, it's not doing so good. So, we need to rethink some of those areas and mixed-use development of those with housing, perhaps high-density housing for H2A workers or just low-income people with neighborhood serving commercial could be a very viable thing. That's something, again, that's going to take time for us to develop, and it's also going to depend on developers, whether it's profitable and whether they're willing to do that, take those chances. That's not something that's entirely within the control of the city. So, I think that's all the questions. Anybody write any more questions? Okay, well, the reason why we did the written questions is I wanted to make sure we got through all of them and we respected the time. through all of them and we respected the time. Since we have another hour scheduled, if somebody does want to ask a question on the microphone, either the county or myself, I'm perfectly happy to share the mic. Is there anybody? Yeah, I've got it taped. Don't tell me the score.
Well, one of the things I've seen, oh, my name's Mick Robinson. I do live out in Tangalwood, not in the city. But one of the things I've seen with a lot of higher-density housing is, one of the ways they enable that is with reduced parking. And that creates a whole nother set of problems and a whole nother set of negative impacts for quality of life. So is there, is there some specific methodology for maintaining adequate parking in these higher-density places that you're trying to look into?
Yes, that's a really good question. We're concerned about that. One of the things, it was pretty clever, somebody proposed an idea. They said, "We would like to do kind of an H2A project that has some recreational amenities for the workers, you know, because we care about these people as human beings, so we want to give them some opportunities, maybe a soccer field or something like that." And we said, "Well, that's going to take away from required parking," right? For a multifamily unit, if we're thinking like it's going to be a multifamily project. So we said, "Well, maybe we could condition the H2A use, allow the use of the space for soccer field, but then if it ever changes, we're like a normal apartment where people have cars, as opposed to, you know, H2A which workers don't have cars, we would need that for parking, so that field would have to be replaced with parking." So we could do something like that. But we are very alert, obviously, next to overcrowding in housing, the thing that drives people crazy, more crazy than anything else in a neighborhood. And I live in a neighborhood in town, too. I know it's over-parking, people parking everywhere. You can't park on your street, and cars that stay for a long time because they're not running. Those kinds of things are annoying, and the city's very aware of that and won't allow any projects to be built that, where parking is a problem or were potentially a problem like that. Am I correct, council member? I'm sorry. Oh, please, go ahead.
And just a couple of additional points to what Mr. Sinco said. First off, in theory, the theory behind the planning of high-density development is that if you provide enough high-density development such that you can provide all the amenities for people who reside there, do not have to rely upon the automobile and have alternatives such as mass transportation, the theory is that the demand for parking will be reduced. And second, you've got to keep in mind, the legislators who are writing these laws, which are either incentivizing or in some cases, requiring high-density development in these areas, many of these legislators, they're coming from areas like San Francisco. So they don't have to rely upon their cars, and they actually don't really care when it comes to parking. If what, if local jurisdictions are using that as a reason to squash, impede, deny high-density housing development, what we're seeing coming out of Sacramento is that they're taking away our authority to regulate based upon parking, and they'll write, write into the law, "Local jurisdictions, thou shall not deny a project based upon things like insufficient parking, design considerations, things like that." So once again, they take away our ability to even regulate in that fashion because the priority is more housing. And a couple of weeks ago, in Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara Housing Coalition had a workshop, and they invited Scott Weiner, from the state legislator, down to talk about some of the recent housing law, because he's been the sponsor of, for example, accessory dwelling unit ordinances and a lot of these laws, which are creating more dense housing. His number-one objective is housing, housing, and housing. He doesn't care about parking. And because, he says, "We're in such a dire situation with regard to our housing crisis, you know, that should be our number-one objective." And these other things are not nearly as important. Those are the things we're going to sacrifice for housing.
That's a fair point. Okay. This lady first.
Thank you, Deutsch. I was just wondering why we don't encourage biking?
We are trying, but this is Santa Maria. We are very interested in, the downtown plan that we're working on has bike paths. Well, that's true, but it's a start.
George Adamon-Grower, and I have a labor contractor's license, so I know the provisions. But as part of those provisions for H2A, it's a requirement that transportation's to and from, I don't know if you're aware of that, but that's generally provided for, and that has to be taken into consideration. Another thing that was mentioned on them being out on ranches, I mean, communication being what it is today, they have, you know, there's a lot, everyone has a cellphone, and they all, if you have access, we have a lot of training that has all of the social justice issues, I mean, that everything else does. And, you know, that's all part of, of society, and believe me, they, they're pretty well-informed.
Fair point also.
Hi, Michael Evangelista. I have a question about, I have a question about the landscaping. If you have an R3 property, that's like maybe a half acre, that the city makes required landscaping, but do you put parking there? Or how does landscaping go with the state or with the city?
I'll have to answer that one, Michael, but we'll have to talk afterwards because your property's kind of unique, and I know it, so we'll talk after. You have a question? Okay.
Judy Frost. It would help to clarify, just what is the definition in the city of Santa Maria of a house that is zoned R1?
There, there's a zoning map, and neighborhoods are, they're either in an R1 or a different zone. Is that?
So if they are on R1, what is that?
It just, it's, it means low-density. It's, I almost want to let the planners answer that question. Would you help me out, Neta? Neta is our principal planner and our planning rock star, so I'll let her answer that question.
The different residential zones are just a different distinguishing of the amount of density that's allowed in that area. So an R1 zone is our low-density residential area, and then there's an R2 and R3, and they increase in the amount of density that's allowed.
Single-family residential, and then there's an R1 zone?
It's a single-family.
What is the density threshold?
So it's defined as a single-family residential zone, up to six units per acre there. Okay?
Not counting accessory dwelling units.
Hi, Barbara Bello. I was asking the question about the Costco being used as the housing unit. I mean, that's huge. It has plenty of parking, there's room for recreational, it has a kitchen, it has sewer, it has bathrooms, I mean, and it's all in one place.
If you know the owner, tell him to submit an application. We'll definitely consider it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Abraham Melendez. So my question is, you mentioned how this program is going to obviously require resources and those kinds of, like sewer and water. So my question is, what's going to have, how long do you expect this housing to be around? And what's going to happen after the H2A program? Because, you know, as you mentioned, it's a temporary program. So what's going to happen when it's both off-season? And if some, hopefully someday we get to the point where we don't need the, you know, we need workers to be brought?
Do you mean in the county or in the city?
I would say in the county.
Okay. Pass to the mic, then.
Yeah, very good questions. So once again, we don't, we don't have an H2A-specific housing program. So we don't, for example, have ordinance provisions that specifically address, okay, where can H2A housing occur, where it can't occur. We just generally address housing issues regardless of what sort of program or need is driving that. So once again, it's really dependent, it's not so much dependent on the type of housing, it's where you're located, where are you in proximity to, you know, utilities. And most of these areas, you don't have a sewer line within proximity that you can tie into. So what you, what you have to do is you've got to install on, on the site wastewater treatment system. Once you get beyond a certain number of occupants in your buildings, the state requirements for what you need to demonstrate in order to install those systems become very strict, and they're challenging. That really is what we see to be the key limitation in the development, where you can find a spot where you don't have all those other limitations that I listed as well. And it really depends on, how many people are you planning on housing there? How long are they going to be there? And one thing we're taking, we're considering right now in the ordinance amendments that we're adopting or we're preparing, hopefully for adoption, regarding agricultural employee dwellings, is we're looking at temporary housing, manufactured housing. And our planning commission told us to go back and look at, will we allow specific types of manufactured housing, like park model units? Given that some of the farmers have indicated they want to have the flexibility to move the workers from their various properties throughout the county, given their business plan, their crop cycles. So what we did is we talked to our environmental health services division, which is responsible for regulating the water and sewer systems for these types of housing. And it really is limited by, can you get the system, can you engineer a system that meets the state's requirements such that you can accommodate all those people? And after you install that, how does the state treat housing, manufactured housing that you may move from site to site, tie into that system while you're on that site, and then go to another site, tie into that system? Our preliminary discussions with our environmental health services division, they said, "Well, there really is nothing specific like that. The closest thing we have is like a, like a mobile home park." Or that's actually functioning more like a dumping station for an RV campground. So they are looking at it in terms of, well, what would be the requirements for that? And it just doesn't work for what the farmers need to have there on site and how they would like to operate their businesses. So it's challenging. It was really frustrating for us because we came up with a system where we say, "Hey, we can reduce our permit requirements," but then, once we started considering everything that goes into serving those units, that's where the roadblocks were presented and are very formidable.
That reminds me, Dan, I forgot to ask you my question. I mentioned it to you earlier, so I gave you a heads up. You should be prepared. One of the things that came out at one of the public meetings was that a farmer only needed H2A workers for three months. And hotels right now, and I told you earlier, we're going to work with, try to figure out a way to work with them and incentivize them to be more flexible. But he said that they require a six-month contract. So I was thinking, well, maybe the county could at least provide temporary barracks, temporary dwellings for a short period of time, and it shouldn't require full-on septic and everything for a short period of time. Can you address that question? I said "should," doesn't mean I'm right.
Unfortunately, no can do. Because the way the environment, the regulation, the state regulations, environmental health regulations are written, in that situation, it would not be considered a permanent dwelling. They would have to look at how the regulations classify other uses and try to fit it to one of those categories. And once again, for those sorts of situations where you'd have only temporary housing on site, it's either going to fall into like a campground classification, an RV park classification, but it just doesn't fit in the permanent dwelling block, so they have to treat it as such, so.
Okay. She was first.
Thank you, Alexandra Allen. I understand that R1 housing means single-family housing in the city, and I think that was a great question to clarify that. I believe, though, that we would all be in agreement that there are many, many instances of multiple families living in R1 housing in the city. And I'm wondering what, if anything, the city is currently doing to address those situations.
Well, "single-family" is kind of a quaint term of art now. It doesn't really mean families related by blood or adoption anymore. It means people who choose to live together voluntarily. That's a distinguishing factor between H2A workers. They don't necessarily choose to live with each other voluntarily, so that's one of the distinctions. But the point is, is that the number of people that choose to live together as a quote-unfamiliar as a living unit is not something that the city can, has a lot of room to regulate. Multiple families can live as long as they don't exceed certain occupancy limits that are defined by state law, and that's just the way it is. Did you have a follow-up?
Yes.
We need that for the audio.
So then, is it fair to say that in practice, the city does not regulate the number of individuals choosing to live together in single-family homes?
The short answer is yes. That's, that's correct.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Austin. I still have a question that, up there it said that only in R1s, only six people. And when we have, in Santa Maria, if you have a board and care and all that, you can only have so many. How come H2A can have more?
It can, it can have, I mean, we can regulate, I'm of the opinion that we can, the city can regulate H2A just like board and care. That's, the question is whether we wish to, and that's what these forums are trying to lead us towards the decision. Mr. Gale was first.
I live in the Carriage District. We have a home 2,100 square feet. We have two showerheads. So like other homes that have displaced families that rented for $2,000, that now they rent for $8,000, we could rent our home to up to 20 workers. We have enough space, we have two showerheads. This is the situation we're in right now, since the moratorium of six beds per home is gone. So they can do that, we can do that to our house. We can encourage all the people in the Carriage District to rent our homes with two showerheads to more than 20 people because we have the square footage. Is this what we want for the city? And what do we want the city to do for us? That's the question I have.
Again, that's one of the things that we'll be considering as we go through this process. Do you have a question?
Hi, my name's Gail Macias, and I own multiple properties in multiple communities. I've tried to keep them in Santa Maria, but I've outsourced now, seeing the deterioration of the property values and so on and so forth. I have several in Sacramento. They all are issued two parking permits with your home. The houses are, I have some in the historic district and some in the regular district. So cars are towed away every single day on our block in Sacramento. I'd recommend that for our city, to take that into consideration. I also want to know what, how many communities are asking to become HOAs and developing their own rules and bylaws for parking issues, for vehicle issues, for, I know you can't limit the people, but you can certainly deter the people, the number of people. And then, lastly, I do have to say that I think our city really didn't look at one of the larger projects in our community, which was the tolls Boone Street project. We were told that there was sufficient parking for there and just drive down Boone Street in 24/7. It is absolutely terrible there.
That's a little beyond our scope, but I appreciate your comments. We have a lot of tools in our toolbox to address problems that are neighborhood-specific, such as places where there's too much parking. We can do parking permits, but those are things that we like to handle on a case-by-case basis rather than a one-size-fits-all. Yes, sir?
Buenas noches. No tengo nada en contra de nuestros hermanos contratados, pero veo que nosotros también somos campesinos establecidos en nuestra comunidad. Y como dicen, como hay familias que están desalojantos para meter nuestros hermanos contratados.
Hello, my name is Francisco, and I have nothing against the H2A workers. And he has nothing against H2A workers, and he is an advocate for local farmworkers here in our local community.
Como me considero como una activista también en mejoramiento en las escuelas, y he mirado que cada familia este buscamos áreas donde esté más cerca la escuela para nuestros hijos, y realmente nos están corriendo, y los que son afectados son nuestros hijos.
I am an activist in the community, and I am also a father, and a lot of farmworkers in the community, you know, we, we want the best for our children and look for, and look for housing in, near their schools.
Yo creo que también nos tomen con consideración porque somos campesinos también, somos parte de la economía también. Este, veo que estamos, nos están poniendo campesinos establecidos aquí con restablecido a contratados también. Yo creo que no es justo.
He said that, you know, we, we need to protect the workers that are here, local domestic farmworkers. And it's, it's not fair that, that these workers are being placed in bad conditions and that we really need to advocate for our local farmworkers and...
It's like the local, the local farmworkers being displaced for H2A housing. And therefore, local farmworkers are being affected by, by H2A housing in that way. And, and there's this sense that local farmworkers being pitted against H2A workers, and that is not indeed that you'd like to see.
Muchísimas gracias por su atención.
Thank you. One thing I would like to point out, I didn't mention in the overview, local domestic workers get the same rate that H2A workers get. That's one of the conditions of the program, is that if, if H2A workers are here in the community, local farmworkers can earn the same wage. They can't earn a lesser wage. They have to be treated exactly the same.
Hi, my name's Patricia Solario, and I would, this is more of a logistical thing. If the city of Santa Maria would provide professional interpretation, we wouldn't have to run into this. So I would suggest that for further...
Okay, thank you. Okay, hello?
My name's Susan Gonzalez, and I also live in the Carriage District. And I think what's getting misconstrued here is that approved H2A housing is a great benefit for the farmworkers and the farmers. And what's happening is by you not approving it and not moving it forward fast enough, these landlords are opening their houses to multiple people, like this gentleman said, making $8,000 a month or whatever. And that's what's happening. We have three of them around the corner of us on Miller Street. There is no parking on Miller Street. Each house at any given night has six cars parked in front of it, and the rest park on the streets of this Carriage District. So that's our frustration, that you guys aren't moving forward with this to take care of these people so the farmers can take care of their workers and they can get out of the residential areas.
Definitely trying.
Este, mi pregunta, o sea, el problema que yo he mirado en nuestra comunidad, este, es, por ejemplo, el costo de, de la renta de una casa, se está acercando a los $2,000 dólares, que es lo que ganamos por mes. Y, y lo que he visto en nuestra comunidad es, es parte de eso, que, que siento que a veces no está regulados también los, ¿cómo se dice? Pues los salarios con el costo de la renta, si...
My name is Antonio, and I'd like to comment on the relation between salaries and rent. Many times, the rent is getting close to $2,000 a month, and that's what a lot of us make per month. And I mainly want to, to think about that.
Este, todos quisiéramos tener un hogar y, y tener quizás una recámara para nuestros hijos, pero a veces tenemos que estar haciendo todavía trabajos extras para poder este cubrir todos esos gastos, porque si tienes, pagando un carro, no te alcanza. Entonces, es un problema de vivienda que, que nos afecta a todos. Debería de haber una regulación entre sueldo y regulación de rentas. Si el problema es como la vivienda, es lo que yo he visto en nuestra comunidad.
You know, a lot of us would like to have a house where our kids get their own bedroom, but we just can't make that happen when you take into account bills and car payments. And so I, I just would like to see the city take that into account and really look at the correspondence between what people earn, what the average worker earns in the city, and the cost of housing.
Sí, y cuando baja el trabajo, a veces se sienta más.
And when work goes down in off-season, we feel it more.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Oh, is your, okay. So has he. You're closer.
Well, with that comment, I've been here for six generations, and the sixth generation, and a lot of times there have been housing shortages. And what that does is it puts the pressure on people like, like what you heard here. And so we went through, you know, some processes as far as the county. This is kind of like the county's evening to vent, and I think that, you know, there's going to be some issues in the city. It's going to be a multi-pronged solution. But when we go out and, you know, from, from the stories that I've heard, you go out and you try to do a really nice job on housing, and then the nicer the job, you go in and you just hammer them on permits, you know, rather than making some kind of facilitating accommodations to agree with what the state's spirit of the law is, is to try to do something so you don't hammer the economics out of anybody doing anything. So what you do is you promote slumlordism by just going in and barely fixing up something that has something substandard. So if you want to do a good job, you get so hammered that there's no economics in doing something. So the county really needs to take a look at that so that they, they get somewhere in between of being reasonable and not going ballistic on the permitting process.
You mean like in the city, right?
So my, I'm obviously not an expert either, but my, my understanding is that, like you mentioned, there's, they have to pay the H2A rate to domestic workers that are working under those, in those kinds of areas. But I've also seen a lot of advertisement for the minimum wage jobs. So I'm wondering if, if there's any workplaces where they're advertising just to any domestic workers, the 13-point, you know, whatever it is, to domestic workers. I would imagine that if they're doing that, that they wouldn't have the shortage of workers that they're...
I can't speak to that, but my information from, well, that's a different, that's a topic for a later forum, for sure. We are going to try to stay on the housing issue as much as possible. But that is definitely one of the forums we want to have, is the, the economics of the agricultural operations. And hopefully we'll have that one next time, but if not, then maybe in two months.
Hi, I'm Nora, and perhaps this is, this is for the county. I live in Tanglewood. And what I've seen is that we do have, we are also affected by the farmworkers because we have a lot of people who come in and purchase a home in Tanglewood and rent it and put probably 10, 20 people, 15 people in a home. How can that be possible? Bathroom situation, that's, you have sheds behind those homes where people are living in there, who knows in what kind of condition. You have excess amount of trash cans in, in front of their homes. Not fair, because the neighborhood is not looking good. We have farmers also, perhaps buying homes there and housing some of the workers. I see a bus parked in, in our community. It doesn't belong there. So hopefully, something can be done. And I know that it is tough, but we all have to live with each other. And in my opinion here is, the more people that are living in these homes, the more trash is going to be outside the homes, and a lot of people are not cleaning. We had an area project the other day, Service Santa Maria came and helped us to clean up Tanglewood. It is amazing the amount of trash that we took out of the neighborhood that day. Because it's just too many people that are not cleaning up. And that's, I think maybe we can regulate the amount of people that we can allow these homeowners to put into this home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have the same problems in the city, you know. It's, we at least have code enforcement to deal with some of those problems. I don't know, county code enforcement, okay, well, I'll let you comment on that.
Well, a couple things. I want to get back to the gentleman's original comment about us, our limitations when it comes to streamline the permit process for you to facilitate development at a much more rapid pace, which we all would like to see. I want to make it clear, if we don't comply with state law, it puts the county in jeopardy and, and position of liability. And we are mandated by the state to enforce these laws. And I bring that up because if you want to set your sights on the correct target when it comes to those issues and those regulations, those limitations that come out of our permitting process, you really need to go talk to the state legislature and change state law. And change those laws so we don't have to enforce them. So I want to make that point clear. With regard to how many people occupy a house, as Mr. Sinco stated earlier, we don't regulate based upon a family. We can't say, we can't regulate upon the occupants. Basically, anybody communing together in a household is defined as a family, and there are very strict limitations on how we can regulate based upon that. And that's for equity reasons. Another way this comes into play, it's not in the H2A worker program sort of context, but we often get complaints about sober living facilities. For example, people say, how could you allow a sober living facility to move in right next door? We are preempted by state law to regulate them. They are considered a family, just like the conventional, traditional families that you may think of when you think of those who occupy these types of residencies. And that's to protect them and make sure that we treat them fairly and equally like we would other people. But some of the other issues you mentioned, they're actually, they're bona fide zoning violations. You can't be parking your bus in your front yard. You can't be installing sheds in your setback areas. So those, you can call a complaint to our zoning enforcement folks, they're going to go out, they're going to do investigation. And if they do find and can corroborate that a violation does exist, they're going to issue notice of violation, then go through the progressive enforcement process to get compliance. So you may do so, you may do that. And if you have a particular house where you think there, there is a zoning violation, you by all means can go ahead and file a zoning complaint, we'll take action on it.
That goes in the city, too. My office handles code enforcement, and we're very proud of our responsiveness to complaints and our desire to preserve neighborhood quality.
I lived within, in the county also, and I've been calling on a residence that is breaking violation in like four different categories of zoning for three years now, and it's still the same mess.
I don't have control in the county, and they don't do code enforcement, so maybe make another call. Let me see, I'll let him answer.
Well, I was going to say, I don't work in code enforcement. Our department does have a code enforcement division. After the event, I'd be more than happy to take down your information and follow up to see what's going on with, with regard to that zoning complaint.
Yeah, and I, I'm also willing to take questions that are, maybe you want to talk just one-on-one, I'll stay after as well. I would like to wrap this up, if we can, even though we have another half hour, but I think we've covered most of the ground. So let's do a final round here.
I basically have two questions. I, I thought I heard somebody say, you can't regulate how many people are in a single-family residence.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, in certain zones, yeah.
Right, right. I mean, there, there has to be some limits, right? And so you can regulate if they go beyond those limits, right? And the other, the other question I had was, as far as zoning enforcement, it seems like to me that you guys don't have a lot of teeth in, in a lot of the zoning enforcement. And, and I don't think that's your fault, but it, it is a fairly long process a lot of times, right?
Yeah, even, even, I feel that our code enforcement is really top-notch. It does take time because we're sensitive to two things. One, we respect property rights. So even if somebody's in violation, we, we don't want to go be overzealous. So we try to balance the interests and be respectful. So it does, we give a lot of leeway. We give, the old saying, we give people enough rope. So it does take time. And, and there is a limit on occupancy, but in state law, it's pretty liberal. I mean, one, two people per 70 square feet, and then 50 square feet for every person after that. So 120 square feet bedroom is three people, no problem. And so you get three bedrooms, that's nine people. Actually, H2A standard's a little better, it's 50 square feet per person, so you need 150. Actually lowers the number than state. But that, our hands are largely tied.
My name is Lisa Bedrogi, I'm a land use consultant. And I guess I'm having a difficult time completely agreeing with the concept that state law is so prohibitive, because there's an awful lot of state law that does encourage agriculture and encourages housing. And I'm wondering if we need to, to look at that a little more broadly. You know, I don't know, I guess my question for the county is, do you have a specific legislative analyst that really looks in-depth at some of these laws? Because there seems to be a lot of conflict. And, you know, again, trying to address some of the laws that do encourage agriculture, encourage housing, seems like more could be done.
Point the way to me, because, yes, we do have, we actually have legislative analysts with whom we contract. When, for example, there are pending bills in the state legislature which would affect housing, we do coordinate with them, we'll opine, and we'll try to get into the legislative process provisions in these laws that will truly work for us, because we get some squirrely things coming out of Sacramento that we're supposed to enforce. But we do that, particularly in, when we update our housing element. And once again, that's where we write into our housing element a lot of programs for us. If or when the board gives us the resources to pursue that, we will pursue them. Whenever we are facing with state legislation that we're mandated to enforce, and particularly the legislation that we're trying to codify in our local regulations, we scrutinize the law. And we have attorneys, we have county council who weighs in on it and will assist us and interpret it. And once again, I can't emphasize this enough, if we could provide more housing to deal with this housing problem, we would have already done it. There is no lack of will at the county amongst the decision-makers, amongst our staff, when it comes to the provision of housing. We want farmers to succeed. We want you to have as much flexibility as you can. But we can only go so far without placing the county in a position of liability, and we can't do that, because we got to take a responsible action, and we got to make sure that our decisions are legally sound. Because something I did not bring up is that Santa Barbara County is a highly litigious environment. There are very affluent, well-heeled people who have the skills to represent themselves in the public sphere. We get sued a lot, much more so than other counties. This is typical for coastal counties, where it's more affluent. But you go in the inland areas, you go into San Joaquin Valley, you don't have groups there who are waiting to sue us when we adopt regulations, which would help the farmers. So we're always having to calculate to make sure that we can get a decision through the board, we'll be legally defensible. It's not going to bankrupt the county in litigation. So there's a lot of considerations that go into this. Once again, I can't emphasize this enough, we want to help you, and we're trying. And if you see any opportunities, I am all ears. So please let me know.
Dan, what's the biggest hurdle, state law hurdle? Is it the, I mean, I, I was kind of looking at the questions when you answered this. What is, of all the state policies that discourage housing, permanent housing in the agricultural areas, that, which is the biggest one that's the hurdle that could possibly be changed, maybe?
It's a good question, because I'll put my political science hat on. This would be ripe for a multivariate regression analysis, because there's a lot of factors that go into it. What I would say, though, is that the government code specifically with regard to LAFCO and the formation of cities and the expansion of cities and urban services beyond city jurisdictions, that is, I would argue, to be the most formidable barrier to allowing that level of development that many people would like to see on agricultural lands. There are other laws, too, that affect it. Everybody loves to just bash CEQA. To me, CEQA is not really the issue. It's, and evidence of that comes from the fact that a lot of CEQA implementation is driven by local politics. Because what gets through with the negative declaration in the San Joaquin Valley would require a big hefty environmental impact report in Santa Barbara County. Once again, because you have so many groups watching what we're doing very closely and willing to challenge us, and there's such a low bar for litigating and getting us to do very expensive environmental documents, that, that plays into it. But once again, the real restriction is, you know, we just can't check all the boxes that need to be checked off to approve the level of development out there in the ag lands, because government code says you're not supposed to be locating that sort of development out there, you're supposed to be locating it here.
Thanks, Dan. It looks like we have one more question, and we'll call it a night.
Hi, this is Cheryl again. I have a question, and it's one I've asked all the time. They keep saying H2A has...
They, they keep saying H-2A has strict rules in the house, that they have to follow certain rules. Well, how do the homeowners that live next to them know what the rules are that they're supposed to be following? We don't know them, and I've, I've asked and asked and asked, and I've been supposed to be getting them, and we still haven't gotten them. So how do we know what they're doing right or wrong? You know?
Well, there, there aren't a lot of rules, if you mean conduct. I mean, they have the same rules as everyone else. They're supposed to be courteous to their neighbors, not park in the lawn, not have trash, junk, and debris, not do those nuisance kinds of things. Inside the house, it's kind of their business, as long as they're not breaking the law. There aren't any rules. Now, a lot of the H-2A houses have rules for the workers because they don't want to cause problems in the neighborhood. They say like, "No drinking in the house," or "curfew at 10." But, but those are voluntary. That's like an HOA, you know, has certain voluntary regulations in neighborhoods that, that aren't enforced by, by law. So I can tell you the regulations that apply, I'll get that to you, I have that, I have it with me, I can give you it. There's not a long list. It's basically things like 50 square feet stocked kitchen, but in terms of rules of what they can do, it's, it's same kind of rules that apply to everyone else. They're here on a visa, they're legally here in this country, they're not prisoners, so they don't have any restrictions. No, that's, that's not, not, not true. All right, well, I think this was really great. Thank you so much for coming, and I look forward to our next forum in a month, and I'm not sure what the topic will be, but it will be interesting, I promise. So thank you again.